Okay, let's go ahead and get started. We're gonna do a council meeting follow-up. So, Carter? If anybody has anything.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I do not have anything to add for this particular item.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, moving on. Engineering consultants, Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this item may be titled a little funny, so bear with me while I kinda set this up a touch. The, the general question was, um, a balancing question, if you will, with regard to what level of outsourcing we wanna do for engineering consultants and, and services that we procure, if you will, from time to time for projects that we do and so on. As you might imagine, a lot of that that we do procure is along the lines of civil-based engineering. We also do procure the services of electrical engineering. We also procure surveying services. We do landscape architect-type services, geotechnical-type engineering, and so on. But, but the fact is, we do spend a lot of money on, on outsourcing some of these services. A lot, because we need the specialties and we need the help and, and we don't have the, the staff to plug in to every aspect of this in order to avoid that totally. I have asked for some analysis along the lines of some of the numbers that we deal with and, and what some of the issues are additionally that we need to be aware of, so that hopefully you can help us find that balance of what's appropriate in terms of providing internal services, if you will, for projects that we do, and hiring outside services to get the help that we need from time to time. So, that's what I mean by balancing question. If you can help us understand where that ought to be in terms of internal and outsourcing, we would sure appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, if I could turn the time over to Alex, our city engineer, to help us with some of those details, I'd, I'd sure appreciate that.
You bet. Hi, Alex.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As Carter said, we do outsource projects for city engineering, and we do have a, a lot of different types of projects that we do have consultants work on. Over the last two years, I guess, active projects that we do have, these are larger projects, these are projects like Darrington Water Replacement, this is Poplar, Poplar and First Street, these are like K Street, projects that we have that are upwards of several million dollars. And we've, we've had six of those over the last two years, which have valued, and these are contract costs, these aren't what we've paid out already, but roughly between seven-hundred and eight, and eight-hundred thousand dollars. And so, but that's six projects where we have about eighty projects, and so we have a lot of projects that we do in-house, that we design, that we bid, that we even inspect on our own. So there are different components of these larger projects that take different types of engineering that go along with it.
Questions for Alex.
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Can you tell me, from a cost analysis, well, first, I guess I wanna know why we're so light in your department compared to years past? Where have all the employees gone? Why haven't they been replaced? And secondly, do you have any idea, cost-wise, if we were to bring your department back up to where it should be, would we be able to, would that balance out with the amount of money that we're outsourcing?
It's definitely gonna, it, it's gonna balance in some way, but we are always gonna need consultants regardless with special engineering, like, we, we are mostly civil engineering for infrastructure like water, sewer, streets. But we're always gonna need, as Carter said, electrical engineers, environmental engineers, specialty engineers that we don't have the expertise in. As far as filling the role of some of the positions, so eight years ago, engineering had fourteen staff members. Right now, we have seven. We had a city locator that has since moved to another department or another division to do that work. We had, I believe, two other engineers that one of the positions sat vacant and was not filled, and a city surveyor, which now we, we, we consult out those services. Why we don't have some of those positions, I'm not quite sure about the engineering positions being filled, but the surveyor has been vacant since 2012, and I believe there was multiple attempts to try and hire a surveyor, but we did not get much interest in it.
It would be cheaper for us to have one on staff as opposed to outsourcing it, would it not?
I don't know for sure, honestly. I really don't. We, we are able to, from what I understand with our surveying services, we're able to meet within our budget, which, which I believe we can pretty well, and the surveying services aren't, aren't exorbitant. Now, when you talk about special surveying, like surveying at the landfill, that's different, that's, that's more specialty, those are larger surveying flights that cost a little bit more.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll, I'll reiterate some of Councilman Dell's question. That's essentially the question I had is, I noticed you had a fifty percent reduction in staff since 2014. I was curious to know what impact that has had on your department, both the quality and quantity of work, like, have we learned anything that maybe we can, that we can manage with a smaller engineering department, or has it had an impact on the types of projects we're taking on, the timeline that we're, you know, I'm curious to know what impact that's had on your department. Thank you.
Certainly, at, Mr. Mayor, council member, certainly it has made us have to consult out more projects to get done, just because we do not have the, the availability of time and, and staff to take on those with the load of work that it's taken. As far as quality of work, I, I don't think that that's made a difference in it. We've just switched our priority of, of how we manage projects, basically. We are taking, hiring consultants on projects that are larger, that are infrastructure projects that if our load was lighter, we would have, may have taken on ourselves, but these are parts of projects, too. I should mention that, you know, larger water projects, you know, for instance, Darrington, that was designed in-house, so we had our own engineer, licensed engineer, design that project and bid it out. However, that project, because it's a waterline project, requires full-time inspection on-site, which has a, a large cost associated with it. And so, as, our staff does a lot of different, takes a lot of different roles, and we do inspect on projects, but when it takes, you know, Darrington project is, the timeline is expected to take four to five months to complete the whole project, and, and I don't believe we have a staff member that we can delegate to that one role for that long of a time. We need them to do more than one role.
Carter? Then I'll get you, Amber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alex, if, if you could, how much do we spend on a, sort of an average year as it relates to outsourcing these services?
Are these, Mr. City Manager, if I may, is, are these just civil engineering, or is this just all consulting services?
Can you give me both?
Yeah, so, for, I said, as I said before, the last two years, it's been about eight-hundred thousand dollars for, for larger, these are larger water projects mainly, and then in total, about the last two years, it's been about three million dollars for, for both civil and for specialty engineering projects. And these are, these are from different funds, but these are engineering-managed projects.
Mr. Mayor, I think what, what I would say, given the, the delta that that presents in my mind, anyway, that, that there is some room to bring on another civil engineer, for example. But, but I, I would wanna be clear that when it comes to engineering and the needs that we have with the, with the complexity of the projects that we deal with and so on, a civil engineer doesn't necessarily mean that we will be able to get away with not seeking help with even a project like the Darrington project. Certainly, civil is a lot of what we do, but as you can see with regard to the disparity that Alex just identified, there's quite a bit otherwise as well that we would need help with. So my suggestion would be that indeed, if you're willing to consider it, we could certainly bring a proposal during the budget process that would bring some more help to bear to this office. It sounds like we've got the expense room, if you will, if we converted that to salaries, so to speak. Obviously, it wouldn't be eight-hundred thousand dollars, dollar for dollar, I'm not suggesting that, but, but I do think we have room, and for me, that, that gives us something to talk about when May comes around.
Amber, I'll get you, Steve.
I think you, you answered it a little bit, but I'm, I mean, my, my first, like, more fundamental question was, are you asking us to weigh the pros and cons of growing the engineering department versus continuing to outsource work? Is that generally speaking what you're after?
Mr. Mayor, council member, that, that's exactly the balance that I want you to feel comfortable with, because without a doubt, there will be many who will call you and say, hey, they, that eight-hundred thousand dollars was money that your private sector was providing you services for. I, I'm not trying to tell you, though, that we would wanna eat up all eight-hundred thousand dollars with employees, if you will, new employees, but I will tell you that there is a tolerance that you're gonna need to be comfortable with as it relates to what we've been doing here for the last four or five years, eight years maybe, as long as, to what it is we might be proposing in May. I certainly think there's room for us to push that balance a little bit from where we're at right now, but, but I don't wanna tell you that you're gonna save three million dollars, or that you're gonna save eight-hundred thousand dollars. I do think there will be a savings, but I think that savings needs to be tempered with the, you know, the, the intangible costs of phone calls you might get.
Steve Caffey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Something I would like to see is a breakdown of the money spent on the various disciplines, like, how much are you spending on landscape architects? How much are you spending on electrical engineers? How much are you spending on HVAC, mechanical engineers, and then how much is civil engineering? Because then that starts to say where you may need to hire. If out of that eight-hundred thousand dollars in two years, we only spend a hundred thousand dollars for electrical engineers, well, you can't really afford to hire an electrical engineer. But if you spent five-hundred thousand dollars, you could, on civil, you could probably hire a couple of civil. So I would think, and that's something I would like to see then, because yes, as an engineer and my background is, I was a licensed civil engineer, I'm not gonna go out and try to do landscape architecture or HVAC work or electrical, but I'm more than happy to go out and, you know, do, well, I was, I retired my license, but I would be more than happy to go out, you know, and do the water projects, street projects, things like that. So I think we need to temper how we're spending our money, and some of the things we're looking forward to. Are we going to have some of these major projects where we've had to have the electrical, like our extension on Poplar between First Street and Collins? That was probably an electrical engineer that did a lot of that type of work. So those are the types of things I would like to see us weigh before we just bail off into it, but it does sound like potentially expanding staff would be a good idea, so.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Thanks, Alex. Appreciate it.
So Carter, it sounds like then we are looking at you coming back with a proposal to the council and for us to sign off on that, or how does that, how are you, as far as budget-wise, I mean, this is your decision anyway, but what, what, what would you suggest?
Mr. Mayor, if, if there is general comfort with a willingness to hear a proposal, and you think you see the same delta that I do, we'd like to put more pencil to paper and bring you a budget-based proposal that we would likely incorporate starting July 1, or sooner, if you're willing to let us do that, but.
Is that okay with council? They come back with a proposal on it?
All right, thank you. We will do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex.
Okay, athletic field operation agreement. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a follow-up item pursuant to a conversation that you entertained just a few weeks ago when the, you know, representative stakeholders, if you will, from the baseball community came in to talk to you about possibly considering a, a new operation, new arrangement for the Lansing Field Facility. Council gave us the direction of, sure, we'd, we'd entertain proposals, if you will, and so Zulima got to work in visiting with those very same stakeholders, talked to them about options, talked to them about our concerns, the concerns of which I would remind you are along the lines of making sure we don't get upside down again as far as subsidy relationships are concerned. We're hoping to get out of that in this, you know, cost-center area, if you will. We're also hoping that we can leverage some skin in the game, as it were, from our stakeholders, so that the city is not the only entity putting up improvements into these, these associated facilities. Those general guidelines were what we went forward with in regards to further conversation, and Zulima has some ideas that she'd like to share with you tonight. We would certainly take the direction of moving forward with her ideas or doing more homework, whatever you'd like to see, but we have made some progress, we wanted to share that with you tonight.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for having me back tonight. So as Carter mentioned, I have had the opportunity to speak with the primary user groups at the Lansing facility. Just a, a little over a week ago, we had what I felt was a very productive meeting where we talked about the possible structures that we could look at as far as a more long-term relationship that they may be seeking. So you may recall that when they came to you in December, when we visited in December, their primary ask was that a long-term agreement could entice some donors to invest in the properties, because the donors would have some faith that their kids would be playing well into the future at that facility, which of course makes a lot of sense. So in meeting with those groups, we really wanted them to understand the challenges that we have faced in the past, and then to provide them with some considerations or some items that the city would definitely want to consider if we were to entertain another long-term relationship with either or both groups. And so I wanna turn your attention primarily to the athletic field considerations document that was included in your packet, because that really kinda highlights the conversation that we had with these groups, and also highlights the considerations that we would ask you to make if we were gonna entertain an option moving forward, to have a longer-term agreement with one or both of these groups. And so when we talked to them about possible structures, certainly a redesigned lease is something that we could entertain. We made it very clear that, you know, the one-dollar-a-year lease and minimal player fee was not something that would likely be considered again because of the subsidy position that it put the city in, and so made that pretty clear, and everybody seemed to be on the same page about that. Certainly, a memorandum of understanding or an MOU, any kind of rental agreement or a facility use agreement could all be structured with language that would be mutually beneficial for all users and stakeholders, including the city. Everybody in the room seemed agreeable to any of those options or possible structures. Challenges to overcome that we talked about, certainly as the city manager mentioned, our subsidy position was pretty terrible. In 2020, we were at like ninety-eight percent subsidized for the operation, and so we're trying to get out of that, and in fact, the track that we were on under the current rental structure with the rates that were established last spring put us at about four years where we would get pretty close to breaking even in that operation, and so that's really the trajectory that we would like to stay on or improve if we can. Appropriate maintenance and repairs, so certainly there was a concern after we took over operation of the facility last summer, that, that the asset had been neglected as far as the field conditions, particularly the infield, and so we have had to make some additional investments in the property to bring it up to the quality that I think all of our users deserve, all of our players deserve, and so we wanna make sure that moving forward, we don't put ourselves in a position where maintenance is going to be neglected again, and we're gonna be in that situation again. Certainly, we have to consider the staff time that it takes to maintain the facilities or to manage and operate the facility under a rental structure, or really any structure that, that we would be under, and certainly that would be my responsibility to bring forward some, some options for you to consider regarding the resources that would be needed. Limited funding for facility capital improvements, so, you know, there are only so many city dollars to go around, and, and certainly a lot of our facilities are in need of some attention, and so making sure that our user groups understand that the more capital they can bring to the table, the better it is for all users, was certainly not anything that they were surprised at or argued. Historical user group conflicts, so, you know, I think the current, or the previous lease structure with the Legion certainly left some, some bad taste in people's mouths and, and hurt some relationships, but I really think that these groups are trying to move forward in a positive direction, they're trying to, you know, let bygones be bygones, water under the bridge, let's move forward and really develop and grow baseball for our community and for our youth in a more unified approach moving forward. So based on our conversations, I am fairly confident that we're on the right track to mending those relationships and having more synergistic kind of relationships moving forward. And then scheduling challenges, actually were improved quite substantially last year under the rental structure, and so we would just work to hone that in just a little bit more, make sure that every user has an opportunity to use the facility on their preferred dates, and that we're coordinating use of the facility appropriately so that everybody maximizes the benefit of use. So those were the considerations, or the challenges that we were really trying to overcome as we determine whether or not we're really willing to entertain a long-term kind of agreement or relationship with these user groups, and if that is your appetite at this time, then I do have some recommendations on some, some items that we would wanna include in any kind of contract agreement that we move forward with, you know, for a term of anywhere from five to ten years, depending on what you're interested in.
We may have a couple of questions. Go ahead, Bruce, and then Amber.
Thank you. More than what the council wants, I, I think it's, at this point, it's more appropriate for you to tell us what would be best. This is your department, you know this better than we do, so I'd like to hear what your recommendations are and, and how you think that'll work. That, that's what's important to me.
Mayor, council member, I'm, I'm ready to share those recommendations with you, as long as there are no other questions, I guess.
Think, yeah, go ahead, council member, Paula.
I do have one, and I don't know if it's better before you answer his or after, I'll let you decide. I'm wondering if you can give me sort of a short list of pros and cons to continuing this type of relationship with user groups versus just bringing the whole thing in-house? What's the pro and con to the subsidy? What's the pro and con? You know, we gotta protect the city assets, obviously, we have the most control over that if it's in-house. What from your, but it looks like maybe there's, you know, some private funding for improvements that we might not have access to if we don't have an agreement like this, so can you give me the, the short rundown there?
Sure, Mayor, council member, thank you for that question. So certainly, we went through the exercise of weighing pros and cons and ultimately landed on the challenges to overcome is all of the kind of cons to moving out of the rental structure that we're currently in. And, and I think that ultimately what, what we decided is that we can counterbalance all of those cons with language in an agreement that everybody is agreeable to. So certainly, under the structure that we're in now, we don't have any kind of agreement with any of the users at that facility. It's a seasonal thing, we're open, you tell us what date you want, if it's available, we'll rent it to you, this is the rate, we're gonna rent it, and, and that's kind of the end of it. So, so the major con there is that, yes, donors may be unwilling to invest in the property when there's no guarantee that next year their children will be able to play at that facility, and that's, that's probably the primary con to keeping the structure that we have now. We want to be, build those relationships with our user groups, we want to, you know, improve the quality of play for all kids and adults throughout the city that wanna enjoy baseball. So, so that's probably the primary con. A lot of the pros to keeping the current structure is that we do have control, we have control of the asset, we are able to control the maintenance, making sure that it's, it's being upheld, we are able to control the schedule, we are able to utilize the facility ourselves anytime we want to be able to do that, so there are definitely some benefits there. One additional con that I would mention is that everybody assumes that any kind of maintenance or disrepair, litter, those kinds of complaints come to the city, no matter who's rented it, no matter who's leased it. So actually, under the previous lease agreement and the current rental agreement, if the park is a mess, we're still gonna get those complaints because people ultimately turn to the city to say, you know, your asset isn't being kept up well. And so, so we really tried to address all of those challenges, maintain the pros that we see to the current structure while combating the cons that we see in the, in the current and previous structures to come to some recommendations that we think could improve our situation in general moving forward. So if we're ready, I'll, I'll go ahead and, and share with you some of the recommended recommendations.
Everybody, everybody ready for recommendations? Yeah, go ahead, Zulima.
Perfect. So of course, our goal would be to eliminate, eliminate the city subsidy, and so as such, we would not entertain a rate structure that would take steps back for us. So the recommendation is to keep the current rate structure or modify it in such a way that we maintain that positive trajectory towards an eliminated subsidy. The operation, we feel, should be self-sustaining. I, I don't think there's any question that there's a lot of money in baseball, and so there is an opportunity for us to, at the very least, break even, if not make some, some revenue dollars that could help offset expenses in other rec areas throughout the city. So that would be a primary goal that would be written into the langu, or written into any agreement in the form of a rate structure that would achieve that goal, of course. We wanna make sure that we continue to protect our city assets, and so anything moving forward would require that there is adequate physical maintenance of the grounds and the facilities, and that there is adequate custodial care of the grounds and the facilities. So that would include minimum standards for quality and control measures that we would put into place, which of course would put the onus on the user to make sure that they are performing, but also on us to make sure we are holding up our part of the bargain as well, and a mechanism by which the condition is evaluated at least annually, if not more times throughout the year, to make sure that everybody's happy with the condition of the facility. Capital investment in the facility, as part of a long-term agreement, we would expect, they're asking for this long-term agreement so that they can make some capital investments, and so we would expect that if we have a written long-term agreement, they would commit, you know, specific dollars or specific projects within that agreement to help us with the facility improvements. Of course, any agreement that we enter into would require that our city insurance requirements for transfer of any risk or liability would be met while they are operating or using the facility, and that's pretty standard across the board, and I don't, I don't anticipate any issues there. Concessions, we don't want to run the concessions, we don't, frankly, we don't have the staff to run concessions, and so any agreement would involve that concessions is run by another group. That, as early as this morning, comes with its own challenges, as I'm starting to learn, and so we are currently working with the city attorney's office, with our licensing staff to determine what that relationship might need to look like in order to make sure that we have a concessionaire that will likely be coming to you for a request to have a liquor license to serve alcohol at baseball games. So we are currently working through some of the strategies that we may have to. So uh, we are currently working through some of the um, strategies that we may have to to enter into, make that work. But um, but certainly, we would want somebody else to be responsible for that operation rather than the city staff. Um, we want to make sure that it's collaborative scheduling for all users. So our proposal is that we ask the users, the primary users, to submit the dates that they want to use the facility by a specific deadline prior to the season. Uh, all of those dates would be awarded as able. If there are conflicts, we would work with both groups to determine um, how we resolve those date conflicts, uh, what other maybe uh, athletic fields we could offer in place to one group or the other, um, so that it would work for them. Um, but in addition, we really, as a city and an operation, would like to retain the ability to use the facility at any time that it's not being rented or used by one of the primary user groups. Uh, we have several ideas on things that we could do with the facility, including uh, discussions we've had with Spectra to potentially bring concerts to the facility. Uh, we've also toyed around with the idea of uh, like family movie nights where we uh, can do maybe even a baseball-themed movie and and bring people to the park to enjoy uh, summer evenings. And so um, in in discussing those ideas with the baseball groups, they actually got really excited, uh, said that they would love to partner with us on on evenings such as that. Uh, you know, if if we have one of those groups managing concessions, we could have concessions open. So um, you know, it started a conversation that I'm very optimistic about moving forward. Um, but I think could offer an opportunity for the city to to bring more people to our facility and and highlight the asset that we have in the community in in different ways. And so we would want to definitely retain that uh, possibility. And then uh, certainly, we want consequences for non-compliance. So not only would we want to build in some escape clauses if they're not holding up their end of the bargain, or if we're not holding up our end of the bargain, um, people can can terminate the contract. Um, but also, I would like to see language written into the contract that says uh, that there are consequences or fees that will be assessed if we get called back to a facility in order to manage some of the cleanliness issues, some of the other issues that we've had in the past. So really, those are, those are my recommendations. Um, ultimately, to council member Nell's question, I I do believe that we can come up with some long-term agreements that would be beneficial to both the city and the users. Um, so I think ultimately, my recommendation would be that you do allow us to explore that a little bit further. Um, but certainly, I would entertain any questions or or direction that you have or other homework that you would like us to.
Uh, Kyle, I'll get you guys.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Zalima, for your recommendations and for all the information. Um, I'd be curious to know if, it sounds like in the past, and I I saw many a comment uh, uh, you know, placing the responsibility on the city's shoulders for the maintenance of the fields when it was under the previous lease agreement. Uh, I wonder if we could have any signage at the field, something like, you know, this property is being uh, taken care of by this group. If you have questions, concerns, please reach out to them. Uh, I wonder if that would save staff time. Uh, I don't know what we did previously. If we had citizens reaching out to us about the condition of the fields, were we simply reeling that information of the user groups? Or were we um, you know, taking it upon ourselves to do it even though under the previous agreement they were supposed to be responsible for it? Uh, could you give us some insight on how that worked in the past? Thank you.
Mayor, council member, thank you. Uh, my understanding, and of course, I I wasn't responsible for the operation uh, last summer or previous summers, but my understanding is that uh, it was a combination of both. At times, we would go out and just take care of it, city staff would, uh, just to eliminate the the problem, particularly if it was a hazardous condition. Um, sometimes that information would be relayed. Uh, it it just kind of depended on the circumstances and the staff available and the, I guess, weight of the complaint.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you. Uh, I guess I'd be curious um, in uh, what the cost of signage would be and if it would be worth uh, the effort, uh, you know, if it would keep uh, our city staff from uh, fielding those questions and then also just having to, you know, i- if we're going to put an agreement in place, uh, I want to make sure that the, you know, both parties are abiding by the agreement and that we're not, you know, put in a position where folks are complaining about the quality of the field and uh, then we're having to take, you know, the expense of uh, getting that done, even though under the agreement, it's the user group. So I'd be curious to know if there's anything we can do there to make it more clear to individuals who they need to be reaching out to. Um, and then uh, my last comment is, uh, I'm excited to hear that we're talking to Spectra about potentially doing some other events down there. I had made a comment last time about Harden, um, the Harden Group having a concert there and raised like five thousand bucks. So I'd be curious uh, to see more of that. Um, in regards to partnering with Spectra, i- am I correct that they manage the food up at Hogodon? Uh, don't they manage some sort of, they manage the food up at Hogodon? So I'd be curious to hear what their interest level would be in potentially helping us with the concession stands. I I thought at the event center, they have nonprofit groups that are able to work the concessions and then split the profits with them or something like that. I'd be curious to um, you know, if we could come up with a similar arrangement for concession stands, maybe, you know, um, get some nonprofits involved to raise some money and stuff like that. Thank you.
I'm going to have Carter sneak in real quick, and I've got a docket of other people.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I I was hoping I could weigh in a touch on some of that. And there's a lot to unpackage there, so don't let us forget something. No, that's okay, that's okay. We want to get good information out. Um, the the clarity that I would want to seek is with regard to what you're you're certainly touching on, uh, councilman, as it relates to the the maintenance. You know, we we have agreements that that kind of reach the spectrum of how that can work. Uh, without a doubt, we currently have agreements that place, you know, all the upkeep and maintenance on the leaseholder. And, you know, in this situation, we have more of our involvement, and I would anticipate that moving forward. I I guess the question I'd like Zalima to clarify real quick so that that is well-understood as we move into this possibility, is exactly how that would work in this arrangement. So if we've got two stakeholders that are signing on as participants and their dates are clear and everything else, how would the um, the relationship work from an upkeep standpoint? Because I I don't, I don't want the city to look bad on a city asset when the city may not indeed be responsible, and and that does happen. I would hope that could be more clear here. Do you have a response in that regard, Zalima?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, thank you. So I think when it comes to maintenance, uh, there's there's sort of two buckets. So there's this kind of custodial piece, which is more maintaining the litter, making sure trash is picked up, cleanliness of the restrooms, those kinds of things. And then you have the structural upkeep of uh, the facility itself, so the building and the structure, the restrooms, those kinds of things, but also the field maintenance, which is really where we've seen challenges in the past. And so you're talking the infield uh, maintenance of the um, bases and the infield material and the outfield material and the striping and all all of the maintenance that goes along with maintaining the playing surface for the players. And so, to be honest, under uh, this, you know, any any proposed agreement moving forward, our recommendation is that city staff maintains the fields because we have the knowledge, the expertise and the equipment to do that appropriately. Now, what we have discussed with both user groups, that they seem um, to really like the idea of, is where there are double headers, maybe the city doesn't come and prep the field between games, they can go out, they can rake, they can re-stripe if needed. But those pre-game or pre-tournament preps and then the post-game and and post-tournament preps would be done. All of the preseason maintenance, the laser grading of the fields, the bringing in more material, all of those kinds of items, uh, we would like to stay part of the maintenance that the city is performing. And that's, that's what we were able to perform this year to the tune of about twenty-eight thousand dollars. And so when we were sharing that maintenance maintenance expense with these user groups, um, you know, ultimately, the conversation was, how can we recover those expenses uh, through any type of agreement that we enter into? Uh, and they, they were already coming up with some ideas on how they could make that happen so that we could offset the cost and have the city maintain. Now, from a custodial standpoint, uh, I would advocate that the user groups that are responsible for running the facility that day, um, be responsible for the custodial aspect of it. Uh, certainly, signage could potentially help, although it could get convoluted on who has it which day and who might be responsible. But um, but I think those are things that we can work through. And particularly, where we will establish a process uh, to do inspections immediately after a rental, then I think we can get ahead of some of that, some of those issues and and attack them before they become a problem that's noticed by the public.
Yeah, Bruce, Steve, and Amber. Go ahead, Bruce.
Thank you. Um, Kyle, I I appreciate your comments, I do. I I don't necessarily agree with putting signage up. Um, you have multiple users. Nobody's going to know which user's there that day. And I also like the fact that you're being contacted. That's our asset, and I think you should be in the loop, uh, if there's an issue going on down there, unless we're sending staff down there every day, which is even more uh, unproductive to whatever you've got going on in the city. So I would rather not see signs. I'd rather you get that call so you, then you can go down and look at it, and you'll know who used that field the day before, and we could pinpoint it. Because we're going to have so many multiple users using that, I I just don't know how that would work. But my question for you would be, it sounds like, um, will you be, is this, your recommendation is to use a user group? Is it to pick one of the three? Is it to get a conglomeration of of the three of them and form a little board? Um, I mean, we're, I guess I'm a little worried about the way it happened with the Legion, given, given it to one. So I'm kind of curious where where your mind is at with it. And on the same line, um, the concession stand too, I was wondering, were the baseball clubs themselves not interested in running the concession stands? Because that's a, that's a heck of a way to keep their player subsidies down by generating that income. So it's it's a two-part question, I apologize for that, but.
Mayor, council member, uh, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit your second question first, and then you're probably going to have to remind me what your first question was. So, yes, actually, the Horseheads have expressed interest in managing the concessions. And in the conversation that we had uh, just a week and a half ago, Casper Baseball Club said, awesome, we would prefer not to run concessions. Uh, and so we do think that that's an arrangement that could possibly happen. Uh, if not, certainly, we could, you know, inspect or or evaluate the opportunity to bring in a concessionaire to do that for us. But but yes, absolutely, one of the user groups has expressed interest in in managing that operation for all users who are, you know, would like that uh, service. So, first question again, I'm sorry.
It was concerning the uh, ability to have a group made up of each one of them? Or have you picked, do you, in your mind, do you think there's one specific group that stands out that would, you know, I'm just kind of curious where you're at?
Great, thank you for that reminder, I appreciate it. Uh, so I would not recommend an exclusive leaseholder with the option to sublease. That, I I think that's where a lot of the challenges we had before stemmed from. Uh, and so I would not advocate for that. Uh, certainly, I would have to work with Mr. Henley and his team to see uh, how it would work to have multiple user uh, agreements for the same facility. Um, and then certainly, again, I mentioned uh, the liquor license potentially with the Horseheads and the and the challenges that that may present, uh, in order to make that happen, uh, will require a lease agreement of some sort. And so um, certainly, it would take some some working with the legal team to see how we could have multiple users as at a facility. Um, in that case, it may be a a rental agreement, just a long-term rental agreement, uh, where they know that they're going to be guaranteed access to rent the facility for five to ten years.
Follow up, Mr. Mayor.
You bet.
Thanks. Um, I guess in my mind, it seemed, it would seem prudent to to form a board uh, with a member from each of those clubs. And I think that makes your user agreement really simple because it covers everybody. Uh, just a thought, so. Anyway, I appreciate all the hard work you're putting into this. I know it's a lot, and I know you have a lot of groups wanting to use it, but I think we're on the right track, you are. And I think you've done a great job of of getting the subsidies down in a very short period of time. So good on you.
Steve Caffey.
The one thing I was interested in, what kind of a term are you talking about, thinking about from that standpoint? That was my first question. The second one, I would have to agree with uh, Councilman Nell, that I appreciate Kyle's idea about trying to pass off the the calls, but I think we need to know how many complaints we are getting rather than having somebody else go there. So that's kind of where I would be on that. Um, but yes, how many, um, how many years are you talking about?
Mayor, council member, in discussions with the user groups, uh, they would really like to see something no shorter than five years. And I think from the city's standpoint, we would like to see no longer than ten years. So we're looking at that five-to-ten-year timeframe.
Well, I had heard twenty-five bannered around at times, and I was going, because I think we had some of those issues with some of those types. So thank you very much.
Amber.
Thank you, and I I think there's starting to be some clarity around my question um, in your answers to some of the other folks. But um, if we've got multiple users entering into an agreement with us, it it sounds like there's a collaborative relationship right now, but I'm I'm trying to think ahead to conflicts that might arise if somebody is not, one user is not holding up their end of the bargain and others are. So are you, are you suggesting then that we would need to send some staff out essentially after each change in user to check the facility, to make sure that that particular user was operating within the bounds of the agreement before it's passed off to another user? Is that how we would mitigate potential for somebody to place blame on another user or something like that?
Mayor, council member, uh, so as I mentioned, one of the recommendations is that we do establish those minimum standards and quality control measures. And so as part of the quality control, uh, certainly, it needs to be vetted because we haven't invested a terrible amount of time into getting into the real nitty-gritty of what the agreement could look like. But yes, the idea is that we would uh, implement an inspection process where post-rental, we would go out and evaluate and make sure that, you know, they they held up to to their responsibilities uh, with regard to the cleanliness and the upkeep of the facility prior to uh, renting it. You know, we we do a similar thing for the North Casper Clubhouse, which we rent out to various users. We always do a post-inspection, verify that the facility is in good condition before we rent it to the next user.
Kyle.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for the comments. I I'm in agreement. Um, uh, it complicates things, having multiple user groups, and I wasn't having that at the front of my mind when I was thinking about it. But uh, the the point of it was to just make things more efficient for your city staff. I don't know how many complaints you field from citizens. Um, I don't know if it's a lot or a few, uh, but as somebody who has to play middleman in my professional life a lot, it's such a waste of resources. So to make things more efficient, uh, again, another idea is just a group email, you know, uh, send your concerns to concerns@casperbaseballclub.com. You know, we could create a group email where we're still on the loop. We still get those emails, but so do the user groups. And if we make it a a form or something that someone fills out, either in paper, physical at the fields, or online where they say, what date were you there? Uh, what did you see? Uh, then when that came through that group email inbox, it'd be apparent who, which user group was responsible. They know who, you know, if it's timestamped, they know who was renting it. And so that would allow us to stay in the loop and not necessarily have to be that middleman of just carrying the messages back and forth. So I trust that you can make things as efficient as possible. You know, you understand the inner workings, but I would just love to explore any ideas to uh, make those, you know, uh, city staff has many things to do. I would hate for them to waste all their time just carrying messages. So, thank you.
Steve Caffey.
Thank you. Uh, as a follow-up to one of Amber's comments, and you partially answered it when you said you inspect the clubhouse, don't we wind up inspecting all of the city parks when we have leased out one of the shelter houses like the day after? Like if I rent one of them for a a Sunday afternoon, or even a Saturday, and you rent it to somebody else for Sunday, don't you have somebody go out and check it to make sure it was cleaned up, to be able to return deposits or not?
Mayor, council member, I do believe that that is the case when we have back-to-back date rentals.
Okay. I was thinking that was kind of a standard.
So if there's no other comments, it sounds like to move forward, we need to um, go ahead and give a thumbs up to this, or is that the next step you want us to do, Carter?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, the proposal then basically is is almost a hybrid of of what we've talked about in the past. We're not asking for the authority to go out for bid, to do a sole operator relationship. And we are suggesting that we're not going to be the city, meaning that is, the city's not going to be the sole operator either. So we're looking for the opportunity- So, we're looking for the opportunity and the flexibility to explore a multi-party agreement that would be a relationship with the stakeholders, multiple stakeholders, and five to 10 years is what we're anticipating by way of a proposal.
Thumbs up? Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. It sounds like you've done a lot of homework on it. Work is appreciated.
Okay, next item, we've got two-way to one-way proposal. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is the discussion about the neighborhood adjacent to St. Anthony's, the HY street area behind the new Ace Hardware on the west side and the Backdoor Lounge, the area I'm sure you recognize. The question generally was from some of the neighbors, well, maybe even from St. Anthony's, I'm not sure. But, the basic question was whether or not converting some of those streets in the area I just described from a two-way traffic pattern to a one-way traffic pattern would benefit some of the congestion that we see from time to time in that area. And in concert with what traffic will be generated with the new businesses that are going in and the old Safeway building, or Ridley's building, whatever your timeframe might be for that history. We did do some analysis and I would tell you that the short story is that we don't think converting to a one-way direction through there would be beneficial to the area as a whole. However, for some of that detail and insight into the analysis, if I could turn the time over to Mr. Beamer and his team, I'd sure appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mayor, members of council. So, we did look at the 20th Street, HY and Box Elder Street loop, if you will. And we looked at traffic counts through the area as well as an accident report over the last five years, I believe. And really, when you're, we have not seen any conversion, I have not seen any conversion from a two-way to a one-way in Casper since I've been here for 13 years. But, generally speaking, it's about capacity and traffic flows coming into that area and any congestion that we see would be a main reason why we would want to take that two-way and convert it to a one-way. We looked at, as I said, we looked at the traffic counts and it looks, for the most part, pretty low flow through there for the most part. Looking at, on average, there were about, per day, 243 vehicles going through that area. So, that's per hour, about 60 vehicles per hour on average. And that's, that's not, that's not looking at the peak hours specifically, that's throughout. And so, it indicated for the most part, low traffic flow. And then as far as the accident reports over the last five years, there were three and they were not related to actual driving accidents. There were just a couple parking accidents and then one in the alleyway. So, but overall, it does not look like that is an area due to the amount of capacity that's there. There's still plenty left, we believe. So, we don't recommend at this time that it would be turned to a one-way.
Questions for Alex? Yeah, Steve.
When Safeway was there, were there any complaints about traffic or anything from the school?
I am unaware of any.
No, because I was just wondering, because I would have thought Safeway would have had as much or more traffic than what Ace is going to have. And if there was not an issue with Safeway there, I would have to agree with what your analysis is showing that basically, it's a status quo.
Anecdotally, Steve, I worked there during the time the Safeway was open at St. Anthony's and there was never, I was the dean there and dealt with a lot of that type of stuff and never was there any conversation whatsoever with the school during that time of converting that. So, just anecdotally.
Thank you.
You bet. Any other questions? Oh, Bruce.
Oh. I just wanted to, I wanted to say thank you. This was a necessary look for us. We had a lot of complaints from the school, a lot of complaints from the parents, especially during pickup and drop-off time. And so, I think it behooved us to do this and I'm glad we did it. And now, we have something we can take back to them and say, you know, listen, we did our work instead of just ignoring them. So, I appreciate the fact that you took the time and that we as a council directed you to go do such a thing. So, hopefully, those parents will be able to rest easy and knowing that the appropriate study was done by an engineer and we should be good. So, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you guys for your time on this, appreciate it.
That's what a civil engineer does.
Yeah. Thanks, Andrew. Just wanted to make sure to thank you too.
Why didn't Andrew speak to us tonight? Is there a problem? Is there a problem that you didn't speak to us tonight that you sent him? I'm just curious.
Okay, got an agenda review coming up? Anything, Carter, you've got?
I wasn't even...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as far as the agenda review is concerned, there's a couple highlights I'd point out, if you will. In pre-meeting next week, we have noted on your grid document, if you have that in front of you, that we are anticipating the need to start pre-meeting at 5:15, if council's okay with that. We have a municipal court update that would be delivered by your judge. We also have some follow-up as it relates to policy questions that we wanted to come back to you and discuss. As you can see there, mostly related to our investment strategies and that kind of thing. The ward boundaries discussion is slated for February 1st as well. We are anticipating, let's see, nothing else that would be extraordinary or render a bunch of other discussion that I can see as you look through there. If you have questions, I'd certainly be open to those for the meeting of the first.
And just real briefly, I did ask to see if we could do 5:15 a little earlier because I wanted to get the municipal judge in to talk to us as soon as I could too. So, if that's okay with everybody, we can start a little early to be able to do that. And then, if you're on the docket for the leadership meeting, we'll start at 4:45 instead of 5 o'clock. So, if you're going to be planning to do that, we'll start then and then 5:15 will be our pre-meeting. So, if that's okay with everybody. Awesome, thank you. Any further questions for Carter for agenda? Okay, anything else, Carter?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a couple needs to visit with council and executive session. And at this point, I believe it would be land and maybe personnel, but certainly for sure, we need to talk to council from the land perspective. Security was the other one. We will have some security discussions we need to have as well. So, maybe three, maybe three, I'm sorry. The work session for the 8th is going to be a busy one, as you can see. We have a community promotions proposal that we want to give to council in concert with Visit Casper. And since we have Visit Casper in the room, they want to talk to us about a partnership for some transportation ideas that they have in mind. This will be the time of year also that we need to start having conversations with you about your liquor dealers in the community as well. And so, the report from PD, which is a pretty typical report, will be one that you'll have also on the 8th. We aren't too far into the new calendar year where we need to come forward with an amendment discussion with you as well. And given that we are also in the new year, we need to talk about council committee assignments too. And that would be it for the 8th. 22nd is going to be a busy work session also. February is going to be busy. We're getting into March too, we're going to be taking up a lot of your time for budget items. Capital, for example, we're going to be coming forward. Human resources, we need to talk to you about as well. March is going to be budget-intensive, but you will have some budget discussions in February also. And then, of course, we roll into April and that's going to be replete with budget items If you'll look at the back page for your grid document, you can kind of get a lay of the land as it relates to other items we have coming forward as well. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would open up to any discussions council might have about any of our future agendas.
Any questions for Carter? Anything about the upcoming grid too on the back? Yeah, Steve.
I noticed that excessive vehicle storage in yards, is that a little bit along the lines of some of the issues we've been having with code enforcement?
Mr. Mayor, councilman, I would say that it's very much in line with some of the issues we've had from a code enforcement standpoint. And hopefully gets to the point that we find a little easier time of enforcing those issues because as some of you have mentioned, it can be pretty exhausting for neighbors to wait for solutions to occur. And some of our citizens know the game well enough that they can work their way around the necessity that this ordinance would otherwise anticipate for getting rid of some of this stuff we find in people's yards. So, yeah, you bet.
Having that question asked, should we try to get it on our work session agenda rather than just leaving it blank?
I would say yes, that would be an appropriate move. Just be aware that, you know, March, well, February too. February, March and April are pretty full right now. But, we will do whatever council would like us to do. We will embrace it.
Anything else? Okay. Legislative review, I know we're getting close to that and our dinner coming up as well. I don't know if you wanted to chat about that, Carter?
Just real briefly, we've got two major legislative pushes here coming up. The dinner is next week, right?
Thursday.
Thursday, thank you, that's right. And we also have the opportunity to go down to Cheyenne with the WHAM conference, which is an opportunity that we try to take advantage of to visit with our legislative delegation as well, as well as participate in some of the other legislative pushes that are out there. So, between those two items, we've got a lot happening. Just a fun fact for you to end my portion of this discussion, unless there are other questions. I learned today that that bill that we've talked about, the pharmacy handling fee, pharmaceuticals handling fee bill, we believe that that bill will add, if it passes as-is, will add in excess of $7 million a year to the state's health plan, of which we are participants, and will undoubtedly be passed through to the member entities that participate in the plan. And so, that would be for biennial purposes, of which the state participates, as you know, in excess of $14 million each budget. So, I'm hopeful that that kind of information and stuff that can get out there and be persuasive enough to bring some extra consideration for ideas like this.
Amber.
Carter, can you remind me, is that a committee bill that's passed through committee? Or is that the pharmaceutical one?
That is a good question. It's a senate file. And so, you know, generally, committee bills are house bills, but not always. And so, I suspect it probably does have some house push, or excuse me, committee push. But, the bill that I'm referencing is a senate file that would have those impacts if passed as-is.
Any other questions on that? Yeah, go ahead Bruce.
Thursday dinner is at 5?
5:30.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you can make it, that'd be great. I know it's, evenings are always tough, but the better the showing of us and solidarity is really, really good, so. We haven't, we didn't get to do it last year.
We did not.
Yeah, so...
What was, what was the land meeting you were talking about?
That would be an executive session opportunity.
No, 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 no. The legislature deal where you were talking about?
WHAM.
Or did I misunderstand?
WHAM.
Oh, the WHAM meeting. Oh, okay.
Right, yeah.
I misunderstood.
That's okay, I apologize.
Anything else? All right, let's go ahead and move on to the council around the table. We'll start with Sean, go ahead.
Nothing tonight.
Kyle.
Nothing tonight.
Lisa.
Guess I'll make up for Kyle. I just want to mention that the senior sitter parking lot is pretty rough and they have some pretty sizable potholes. And so, when I was driving through there to try to go through the meeting, there were some elderly people having some struggles of trying to navigate through all of that. So, I just thought maybe we could look at that. And I was ashamed that Andrew left because also CY, I'm getting a lot of complaints and I think that you can see on Facebook, everybody's complaining about CY heading west. And I don't remember seeing it on the schedule to reface or anything, but it's pretty awful.
It's Y dot.
It's Y dot?
But, it's terrible.
And then when it's snow and ice, just going there, it kind of just throws you. So, I think we need to have that looked at. And then also, getting a lot of complaints regarding snow removal in residential areas. And so, my complaint, I understand the residential and some people just can't get out there and they can't afford it. But then, I was downtown today and so many of the businesses did not have their snow cleared at all. And so, I think that as a business, it's, we should absolutely positively make sure that those things are cleared off because, you know, that's the whole attraction. So, just encourage businesses to clear their sidewalks. So, that's it.
Amber. Bruce?
I just did it for you. By the way, the snow clearing is a matter of law. I think it's on our books, you'd have to check with the attorney, but...
Only ice.
Huh?
Only ice.
Isn't snow removal, it's not? Excuse me. Anyway, I do have a few things. So, it's all over the airway, I've been getting phone calls, everybody wants to know what happened with this policeman. And all I can tell you is, he was off-duty. That's all I could tell you. I don't know what happened, I don't particularly care what happened. He's resigned, he no longer works for the city and it was an off-duty situation that I'm not privy to, I don't want to be privy to it. And so, if you could direct your calls maybe to the police department, maybe they can give you more help. But I'm, I don't think our council is the ones to do that. I know, chief, I'm sorry. Casper's very own Logan Wilson made an interception at the end of that game to set up the winning score to send the Cincinnati Bengals to the AFC Championship game. And he is, everybody's so high on Josh Allen, Logan's actually a Wyoming boy right here from Casper, Wyoming. So, good for him, we always like to see some hometown people do good things. Lastly, I've been getting a lot of hell over the licensing and appeals board, partly because I'm the liaison, partly because I brought it up. But, there's a misunderstanding that I need to get straight, at least with the public. This is not about contractors doing shoddy work, it's not about any, anything like that. It is up to the homeowner or the purchaser to make sure who they're hiring is capable to do that work. We have nothing to do with that. My complaint is, and still is, that we have licensed contractors who are doing work without getting proper permits, without getting proper inspections. They're doing work, covering it up where it can't even be inspected. And that's where I think we need to give our people some teeth to get them back in line. They've already passed a permit process, they've, these are contractors that are licensed to do business here, they need to follow the rules. It's that simple because it's hurting our constituents. And as an example, what started this is one of our very own senior citizens who's on a fixed income, has work done in his home now that he was preparing to sell, and he can't get an inspection on the work because it was concreted over. get an inspection on the work because it was concreted over. And by rights, probably should have tore it up and made him do it again so that it could be inspected. But we didn't. We permitted it. And that's where this all came from. So, I just wanted to be very clear that it's about an inability to follow the rules. It has nothing to do with the workmanship. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
I guess, just on that point, I also, in asking some questions, just, it's kind of that two-part solution set. So, if we're going to give some teeth, that's where the discussion about the appeals board came in, so that there's kind of a balancing there, where people can be held accountable, but also have, you know, recourse to have questions or challenge something that seems unfair. So, it's no, there's no intention, from what I understand, to be going after people in an unfair manner. But, it's about establishing a system where there's opportunity to hold people accountable, but also have them appeal their case. So, that's all for me.
Steve?
Went to a very nice advanced Casper breakfast last week, and they put out some fairly decent information. I believe you were there, Mr. Vice Mayor. So, absolutely. That's all I have.
Great. Mr. Vice Mayor?
To take what Councilman Nell said a little bit further, that was an awesome, all the games this weekend were awesome. Had the Buffalo Bills, had the Buffalo Bills won, unfortunately, they didn't. But, had they, actually, all four teams would have had Wyoming Cowboy playing for them. So, with them not making it, three out of four have Wyoming Cowboys playing for them. But, to take that conversation back to the athletic fields operation agreement that we talked about earlier, I'm glad to see that we're looking at multiple users. And the reason behind it is, you know, we've had the Horseheads, the Coyotes, the Calvary, the Wildcatters. We've had the semi-pro teams here forever. But, don't forget about our youth that we have here, too. The Wilsons, the Bryant's, the Lansings, the Brownings, the Timbermans, the list goes on and on. So, I think it's just as important that when we have semi-pro teams that come in here or at that level of play, that we still make sure that we provide for our youth here, because we've got a track history from rodeo to ice hockey to baseball to football, that we have people that have made it to the pros. So, it's very important that, to me at least, it's very important that we're doing exactly what we're doing and providing for all. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Just a couple things. I went to the mayor-commissioner meeting last week for breakfast. And so, Carter did share, we talked a little bit about some one-cent funding, education, and what that looks like, and utilizing all the municipalities, being able to do that as we kind of move forward. The success rate of our one-cent funding has generally been, for the last 20, 30 years, been right around 70-some percent. I think there was one year there that, one cycle that I think was around 55 or something. But generally, has broad support. And a big part of that is the educational component, when we go out to educate the community about it and communicate what it does for the Casper community. So, Carter went and did that. I don't know if you want to say anything about that that you did. Okay. But it was real good. The other item that we talked about real briefly was trying to figure out how to split the bill for the six cent. Unfortunately, it didn't pass for one way or another. And so, that still leaves us with the election bill. And so, City of Casper probably is on hook for what, 17 for that? So, so right around there, if we'll have to do that. So, LGBTQ meeting was on Friday, went to that, spent a significant amount of time talking about the ordinance that they want to bring forward. We're still working on that. We're going to be kind of working a little bit to try to figure out what that can be, to present something, especially within the next couple months. Really like to have that done, to have something presented to council, to look at that and have that conversation. So, that's the goal of the committee. That's my goal, as a liaison, to be able to see if we can get that moving forward. Thursday at 11:30, the CCPD, Casper's Council for People with Disabilities, I will be there for that as well. So, I think that's all I got. All right. We're done. Thank you so much, everyone.